Campbell.
President.
Collins.
Present.
Docree.
Present.
Yossi.
Present.
Okay, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the party of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in their own. Thank you, everybody. Looking for motion to approve the agenda, there will be an amendment down when you get down to the renewal of the alcohol, it should actually be for Allen Jerry's and not the community center. By the tobacco and alcohol permit renewals. D sixteen.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Except by Campbell to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Eyes have it. Public comment, is there anybody that would like to address the council right now, now would be the time.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, Mario Boyle City Village citizen. So I see we've got some action coming up on the new wage rates and everything else coming at the end of the meeting here. And I know we've been going through some bargaining and collective bargaining, but I haven't ever heard any report on it yet as a public citizen. Because we used to always, when we went through our bargaining sessions, there was a committee from employer and one for the union who met over a period of time and they come with agreements and they agree to it. And they take it back to the labor union to approve it or not. And typically it comes out to council to review it and approve it or not. But I haven't seen that come across the desk here of any council meeting yet. So can you give me an update of the status of what the collective bargaining agreement is right now? Frank, Mayor.
We did vote at a party.
When?
How many meetings ago was that? And then there were.
I'm in Rondo, man.
I know, but you were here and
I've been looking.
They met with both sides, we met with Keith and we met with the police department.
I've been going through agendas since.
And we had closed session, you left because we had closed session too.
Oh, so did you take action after the closed session?
Yeah.
I didn't see that many of the minutes when it was there that it was actually taken. Okay.
Should have been a May meeting, I believe. It was either the last April meeting or the first May meeting, I believe. Until.
Can you tell me who was on both committees, the employer and employees? The makeup of who were the employees, the please were? Never really. Excuse me.
For the negotiating team?
Yeah, yeah.
On the city side, it was the city attorney, the mayor, myself and Jeff Martins.
Okay.
And then for the employee association, it was Keith Schneckloth, Ashley Lacy.
Kevin.
Kevin Cruz.
Yep.
And for the PD, it was Gary Johns and Chad Hubman.
Okay, can you give a highlights of what has changed? Thank you for letting me know who was there. What's changed, what has been eliminated, what's been brought on that wasn't there before, how was amended? And can you give me any of that idea? I mean, the public should know what's going on too, besides just me.
Yeah, so I don't have that, I don't have it all right up the top of my head, but I could send you the document for the collective bargaining, those are public documents.
Okay, can we get a report in the near future here about what has changed from the original, from the last collective bargain agreement? Frank, you know we've done this thing, you were there eight years, I was the mayor for twelve, you know? And I've always bought that back here.
And we did go through that, as things are slightly different in this administration than anywhere with you.
Right.
But it was all followed correctly.
I'm not sure it wasn't.
Well, I know, so you, I'll have the city get some paperwork for you and you come up to the city.
And then, of course. Thank you. And then, of course, the document itself would be available to the public too, right?
Yes, it's all public information.
Okay, very good, thank you, appreciate it. As with the old one.
Mm-hmm. I think you did that, that meeting number's gone. Was it the second meeting?
Possibly.
Second meeting.
I think it was the same too. Yeah, we went to a closed session and then we came back out of closed session and we made it and we approved it.
I was out of state, so.
We were asked to do a proclamation for stronger than cancer day, but there's nobody here for that tonight, so we will send them a copy of that. That's number five. So we'll go on to number six, consideration to approve the city council minutes from the June second, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Do you hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Yossi, second by Campbell to approve the city council minutes from the June second meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Eyes have it. Six B, consideration to prove the committee a whole with a joint meeting with the community center board from June second, two thousand twenty-five. Your motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dr. Except by Campbell to approve the committee of all joint community center board minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Eyes have it. For six C, consideration to prove the bills payable in amount of nine hundred eighty thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Anybody make questions?
I've got lady checking on a few things, question about, she'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Do I hear any more questions on the bills?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved. Okay.
Motion by Campbell, second. By Collins to prove that those payable, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Your bill is payable as presented.
As presented. Are any nays? Eyes have it. Six D, considering can approve the liquor license renewal, it shouldn't be for Allen Jerry's. Looks like the chief signed off on it.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Campbell, second by Yossi to approve the liquor license renewal for Allen Jerry's. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Eyes have it. Consideration approved tobacco permit renewals for Dollar General store number ten seven seven two, Big Ten Mart number twenty-seven, Big Ten Mart number twenty-five, and Casey's General Store number twenty-five thirty-one.
Bill moved.
Second.
Motion by Yossi, second by Campbell to approve tobacco permit renewals, I almost said taco.
Your honor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I think it might be in our best interest in the future when we have tobacco licenses, have the chief sign off similar to the alcohol licenses. Because we don't know if there was a not necessarily staying or whatever you call it, a check on that business. We wouldn't know if one passed or not, so sure, it might be beneficial to have the chief sign on these two in the future.
Okay, Brian, that's a good idea. Do you hear a motion on that?
So moved. Second.
First, will you second by Collins, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Eyes have it. Number seven, consideration to suspend the rules of wave the second and third reading as required by Iowa Code Section three eighty point three for ordinance two thousand twenty-five fourteen and allowable for a final passage. Jeff, has anybody called in for this?
We receive no comments on this, we have.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, for the public, you want to tell what this ordinance is?
Sure, I think that's the next item on the agenda, but consideration to approve passage of ordinance twenty-five fourteen, which is the rezoning for the Aquatuck first edition, which is the area behind Casey's, just north of Casey's. Those two parcels were combined and they're changing it to C three commercial from I two general industrial. Thank you.
Do you hear a motion to waive the second, third, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by. Roll call.
Yossi.
Aye.
Docree.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Have it.
All right, thank you. Seven B, consideration to approve passage of ordinance two thousand twenty-five fourteen, rezoning Aquatuck first edition from I two general industrial to C three general commercial.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Campbell, second by Yossi to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five fourteen, rezoning Aquatuck first edition, roll call.
Collins.
Aye.
Yossi.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Docree.
Aye.
I thought it.
Thank you. Seven C, consideration to suspend the rules of wave the second and third reading as required by Iowa Code three eighty point three for ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash fifteen to allow for final vote passes. Jeff, could you explain this to us, please?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. This would be the ordinance that amends the city of Eldridge fireworks law. It basically extends the hours to match the hours on the third and the fourth of July and the thirty-first of December to be the same as what it states in state law. This was due to the governor signing Senate File three oh three into law on May nineteenth. And I had requested the suspension because we didn't have enough time to get it in effect before July fourth without doing so.
Thank you, Jeff.
So moved.
Here's second. Second. Motion by Campbell, second by Yossi to suspend the rules on way of second through to reading. Roll call.
Campbell.
Aye.
Yossi.
Aye.
Docree.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
I thought it.
All right, seventy, consideration of passage of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash fifteen, amending the hours for consumer fireworks when they can be used. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Campbell, second by Harry Porter. If you read down on there on section one, it towards there it's got, we're gonna be removing all the language, and when you go down to section two again, it says removing again instead of adding.
Thank you, I'll get that corrected.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Do you hear a motion?
We do.
Okay, all right, roll call.
Yossi.
Aye.
Docree.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
I thought it.
All right, thank you. Seventy, consideration the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash sixteen on accessory dwelling units. Jeff, has anybody called in on that?
We receive no comments on this ordinance, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Do you hear a motion?
Aye.
Motion by Dr. Second by Campbell to approve the reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash sixteen on accessory dwelling units, roll call.
Campbell.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Docree.
Aye.
Yossi.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie, your honor.
Okay. Seven F, consideration to approve the South First Street culvert replacement improvement project proposal for an amount of thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. Nevada, can I follow on you?
Thank you, Mayor. This was an item on the last city council agenda, memo and some information provided by Public Works Director Tony Drew. I did bring some of those questions back and he's here tonight at the meeting and can answer the questions that the council had about this project and the culvert replacement and repair. Please, Tony.
Would you mind clicking on that one, ladies?
Yeah, can I, can I go up through the screen and kind of show you? Help clarify this a little bit, maybe? Can you move that up a little?
Okay.
Perfect. So currently there is a concrete culvert right next to this that takes the surface water from this side of First Street to the other side of First Street. What I'm calling a culvert here on the map is, is actually a, it's actually a field tile outlet pipe. So all of this area drains through a field tile. And it's about two feet deep in the ditch on this side. And then it daylights on this side and that's where the water comes out of all this, it's a lot of water runs probably almost year round. And then the water travels on the surface along First Street, crosses over Black Hawk Trail and then eventually goes into a standpipe right here and hopefully gets into a tile that goes down to the creek. Unless that's plugged, then it overflows and goes over the surface down to the creek. Now, Councilman Docree and I talked a couple hours ago, there are aerial photos that do show that twenty plus years ago, this water went straight through this waterway down to this creek. But somewhere between twenty and thirty years ago from the aerial photos we have, that water got diverted to take this, this route. So this culvert, or this, this, this red culvert that we're calling culvert is a twelve inch metal pipe, corrugated metal pipe that is rotten. So we need to get that replaced and we definitely want to do it before we resurface First Street in case something goes wrong and we have to dig it up. So that cost was eight thousand six hundred dollars of the project. That's the bore in our First Street and for the pipe. Now, the second part of the proposal was the forty-eight eighty-five. So Inglebrook Farms reshaped this, this drainage swale this year. And they're gonna run a field tile up from here up to here to dry up the field for themselves. What they've offered is to upsize it from a six or eight inches that they would use to a twelve inch. And we'll hook this tile directly into that tile, which will keep it all underground and will flow all the way to the creek. The benefits of doing that is we can go back here, we can drop this where it's two foot deep down to about five foot deep because it keeps getting hit with utilities from time to time. So we'll drop it below the utility line. And then on this side, it'll be underground and the water will go from here to here and it'll never see daylight, which will dry all this up and make it mobile and manageable. And we won't have to rely on this standpipe to take the water that plugs on a fairly regular basis, so. That's the proposal, I believe the Inglebrooks are gonna run a silent for their purposes regardless. It was just an offer to upsize it to take not only their water, but also the water that becomes our issue when it gets into our ditch.
Thanks, Tony.
Yep.
Second.
I'm not opposed to the culvert under the road. I am opposed to taxpayers spending money to drain, to help drain private property. I've got pictures of any of you wanna see them from nineteen thirties through nineteen seventies. That water always came across there, went to the ditch, straight to Crow Creek and down. Now, they were just in there this spring taking the trees out, I don't know what the grade is anymore.
There's still a swell.
But is it, is it deep enough to drain the water? I'm sure they didn't shoot the elevation of the intake on the west side of First compared to the crossover on Black Hawk Trail Tim, which falls there. Can't help it, somebody changed it. We do have proof of the history from the state of Iowa. It always ran straight across there, it never came down parallel, made a ninety, went under the road there to the standpipe. You know, if they're gonna put a six inch tile and they know we're gonna open that up the way it originally was, that's their choice if they want to put a twelve inch tile. Six inch will work, it'll just take longer to dry it out. I don't think taxpayers should be on the hook for that time. I am supportive of putting the tube under the road. And when I talked to Tony earlier, the farm field west of First Street, that's all clay tile. So some of that could have been in before utilities reeved it place. All the experience I know on construction job, if you tear up the tile during construction, you have to reestablish it. So like I said, I'm in favor of the pipe under the road, but that's a full amount of eighty-six. Eight thousand six hundred dollars.
I would agree with him.
I don't know how we can agree with you. The culvert is ours and the culvert, we have to take care of it and we have to care of the infrastructure, but the rest of it's private land.
Well, I think at one time they probably did that so they could get access to that south field from the north.
And as of right now, they planted a hundred percent of that east field too, which they used to, and plant around it, it's planted and now.
So, I mean, I don't know what the ditch is, I tried to go back on aerial photos and total maps, but I don't have a gauge to tie those into the map to know where it is now. That ditch may have to be lowered a little bit back to the original state. And we obviously need to drain that a little bit along First Street so we can mow it. But I contend from the old aerials that loop that runs south, parallel to south of First Street shouldn't even be there.
First Street's getting done this fall, yeah. They've already planted, so when were they planning on doing the tie?
He called me after the last council meeting and asked if the council had made a decision, so I assume still this year for the summer.
Because if we would do that culvert prior to First Street getting done, how would we then tie it into the existing? Or would we have to put it to daylight again on the east side?
They would put their tile in first and then we would pour in the new pipe under the road after they were done. Because we'd be three, four feet deeper than it is now, it'd be underground.
I mean, our responsibility is from back to right away to back to right.
Right.
How big of an issue, Tony, is it for the water that flows along south side of Black Hawk? The issues are that we can't, we can't maintain where it flows from north to south along First Street, because it's, it's almost like a small creek, it runs twenty-four hours a day year round. And then the other issue is when it crosses Black Hawk Trail, there is a standpipe there that will take it and put it into a tile that was hand laid quite a few years ago. Because the ditch in Black Hawk Trail used to erode so bad because of all that water. So they literally took a tile and laid it into the erosion channel, covered it back up and put a standpipe on it, so. It's not professionally laid, but it's there, but when the standpipe plugs, then it gets back to flowing over, over land, which will then erode the ditch type of situation. So will there be a problem down the road if we don't do anything there? We'll have the same issues with the water that we have now. We won't be able to maintain that stretch from along First Street and we'll have the same issues with the water standing on the Black Hawk Trail ditch.
You're talking right here, right, Tony?
Yeah, that water will always still be there. And then on the south side of Black Hawk Trail, it's standing water where it's blue year round. And that's where it gets into that standpipe and goes underground unless the standpipe's plugged. So we're gonna have an issue? We'll have the same issues we have now.
See, I just agree with them. If that water goes straight east, there is not gonna be water going south parallel to First Street, that'll dry that out.
I guess I would need direction on how to, because right now the water's flowing south and we would have to reshape it to force the water to go east the way it was for decades.
Because if that's done, then we don't have an issue parallel to South First Street.
That's true. And what's that gonna cost us to fix that?
Put the tube underneath there, eight thousand six hundred dollars.
That's it, you think? There could be no problems on the road?
Well, I don't want to piss the ball, Scott.
I'm just asking.
I may have a little more background on drainage and stuff than some other people.
Yeah, more than me, I agree. Well, we'd have to reshape the area right where it crosses First Street. Because right now it's a channel that forces it to the south. And somebody would have to reshape that to force it to go east.
Somebody blocked it going east, force it south, we'd have to block it south to make it go east.
Right, it was, like we, like we like, it was over twenty years ago, but somebody changed the flow pattern. I don't know who or why.
It was supposed to be through the wall.
Six D. Pay me now or pay me.
There's still some extraneous. Can we change all this?
This is their recommendation.
My recommendation would be to get it underground and get it out of there. If we change the flow and force it east, then we're making it someone else's problem.
More dirt work.
There was no problem back in the day, but somebody changed it at some point before two thousand five. And I, I kind of agree with Tony's recommendation, he's our guy. You know, and I think he's put a lot of time into this, I don't have an extra problem spending the extra, what is it, five thousand dollars to, to make it right, that's my thought.
Scott, you're spending five thousand dollars to benefit a private company.
But you're gonna still spend money, Brian, if you're gonna have to fix the other side eventually, you said it's gonna be a problem.
No, if the water goes straight east, it hits Crow Creek and goes under, down there, it's not.
Are you still taking a look at the problems that goes to the south there? Isn't that, is that ditch gonna still get wet on the south side of the road? The way it is now, yes, I believe Councilman Docree is suggesting we change the flow pattern back to the way it was and make it go straight east into the farm field. Do you agree with that? That's up to you guys, I, I wouldn't. I'm asking your opinion. I guess someone would need to tell me to force the water to move that way, because it's been like this for over twenty years.
Which is gonna be a cost.
There'll be a cost to it.
There'll be a cost to that too, so.
It's not well to spend taxpayers' money on someone else's property. If they want to put a six inch tile to drain that swale, that's up to them. If they want to put a twelve inch tile, that should be up to them too and not the city.
But the, they are choosing to put one in. They're just simply asking if, if we would want to pay the difference to upgrade, they're going to put a tile, but it may not do what we, like what you're recommending, I'm not an expert at that stuff, don't proclaim to be. But it doesn't make sense since they're already going to do it. Kind of like the Wendell Grenwell's addition, the city upgraded the water main. He was already putting a water main in, we upgraded it, paid the difference, so.
Actually, that's not true. Right now?
We did with some channels, I don't.
But you, you see what I'm saying, the project was already gonna be done. This is simply paying the difference, because otherwise, you know, with the cost of labor and diesel fuel, it probably costs four or five thousand dollars to do dirt work, because we still have to maintain the ditch. And we don't know if, if their six inch is actually gonna do it, and they're the experts and say it will dry it up. And this is recommendation of city staff. So I believe this is a pay me now or pay me later situation. And they are gonna be putting a tile in at their cost, they just want to know if we want to pay the difference to make it bigger.
And if we say no, they put in their six inch, it just takes it longer to dry.
I guess without seeing the ditch and the reshaping that would be needed, that's my dilemma is I want to take your advice, your recommendation, but I agree with what Brian says, but I just want to make sure that we're doing it for the right reasons if we spend that extra five grand. My concern is if we don't, then we don't know what we're gonna get into with reshaping.
And it could be more expensive than five grand, we don't know that. If you want to let the water flow in the same direction it's flowing now, then yes, just replace the pipe under the road. If you want to dry up the ditch on First Street and Black Hawk Trail, then we had two options, either to force the water to the east or join forces and put the water underground. There, there are options, but it's not.
Frank, you want to pass somewhere?
There are options for you guys to choose.
There's different decades, sir.
There's different decades, sir.
Well, we know Brian has stated what he states. Scott, if I'm understanding you, do I hear that you're possibly interested in entertaining a motion to do what city staff recommends?
Yeah, I mean, I, I give Brian all the credit. I mean, he is, this is his thing, you know, and he knows this, and I appreciate the historical value on that. But I do believe it's gonna be to pay it now and, or pay it later. And I think we have a plan here in place to not necessarily minimal, but a five thousand dollar cost. And it's the recommendation of city staff to do that. And I think that we can take care of this problem, so I would be in favor of that.
That makes me proud of it.
Sure.
Prior to, well, Tony gave us his opinion prior to him even knowing the water originally went to the east. Can't find that out till today, till I talk to him.
But you still stand with your recommendation to do it with that?
It's an option. I mean, there's, there's a couple of different options here. This is just one option. No, I did not know that it, I did not know that it originally flowed to the east. Prior to all this, I just am going off of my twenty years here, it's gone in this direction. That's what I, that's what the, the option that is presented was to solve something that we dealt with for twenty years, the way it is now.
But you're still gonna have to reshape it to make it flow that, that way correctly, correct? There's gonna be.
If you want it to flow east, it would have to be reshaped.
Right, that's by twenty.
But it's a minimal reshaping, but.
Right, but there will be a cost to that.
Yes, we, yeah.
Yes, Dan. Um, so if you, if we didn't do this, um, and we let the water, we just put in our pipe, they put in their six inch. The water's still gonna flow to the south if we do nothing, unless you reshape the dish, fill it in, you know, do something to force it to the east. If you force it to the east, is it gonna go over land flow then?
Yes.
Which they don't want, which is why they're putting in the tile.
Presumably, yes.
So is there any thing that would stop them from just building a berm back? Berm across their own property and just force the water back into the ditch again?
Probably not. Forty years ago.
So then we end up with the same problem that we've got now. It's, it's a slippery slope too, cause it's in the flood plain. Right, and it's, yeah. And I'm sure it's all, you know, they've got D and R permits to do whatever they're doing there. Rate checked on it and because Adrian had asked a question about it. So I don't know. I mean, you're just, it's, it seems to me by not doing it, you're just getting into a war with the property owners, trying to dry it out and you know. It's not our, it's not our responsibility to dry out a farm field. It's our responsibility to, from right away to right away, back to back. It's private property. If they know we're doing this, it's up to them. If they wanna put a twelve inch tile in, it'll drain faster. Six inch tile will still drain it. It'll, depends on the, uh how much rain we get. We get four inches of rain, it doesn't matter, it's going over top of that.
Oh, we have two to represent, that's okay.
Yeah, that's right. So do I, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to take Tony's recommendation.
Okay, I hear a second.
Just the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-five instead of the eighty-six hundred, just to make sure it's clear.
Yep.
Could we, could we approve the eighty-six hundred tonight and then have Engelbreit come back and address the council?
I have no problems with eighty-six hundred.
I, I don't either. So if we approve the eighty-six hundred tonight and have Engelbreit come back and try to convince us that this is a shared issue. But we have to do the culvert no matter what, right? And we gotta get it ordered and everything before South First is done. I don't know how it takes, but.
I thought it was in stock, wasn't it?
Yeah, the pipe's in stock. Uh, we just need to get the contractor there to do the work prior to the First Street repaming.
The challenge with the plan, it probably won't be till the fall anyways.
He lied to me that it was gonna be now, that they would tile through what's planted, because they need to dry it out.
They'll tile through, but for the boring, we're gonna disturb corn. So we'll have to buy, buy some corn, which is not a big, big deal on a small area.
Potentially, we, we might potentially be into the farm field a little bit, yes.
Rather, I'm not here in a second.
No, it's not either. The motion fails. No second.
To make a motion to do the pipe for a total value of eight thousand six hundred dollars.
I agree with that. I second that.
Motion by Dockery, second by Collins to approve the uh cobra under the road and the boring for eight thousand six hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye? Eyes have it. Seven G, consideration to approve funding for security camera installation at Hickory Creek Soccer Fields in amount of eight thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars to Precision Concepts. Nevada, can I call on you for that?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this was brought up at the joint park board and uh city council meeting as they discussed their project. And in that meeting, there was a general consensus uh for the city covering the cost of the installation and first year uh monthly costs associated with installing the security camera at Hickory Creek Soccer Fields. So this is just bringing that um item forward officially on a city council agenda for a vote.
Thanks, Nevada.
I was gonna push it to a council meeting, so I made a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Dockery, second by Yose. To approve the security camera installation in Hickory Creek Soccer Fields in amount of eight thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars Precision Concept. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes, eyes have it. Seven H, discussion and update on review of documentation received from fire department. Nevada, can I call on you?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is just um kind of a status update for the ongoing discussion that the city council has been having along with the Eldridge Volunteer Fire Department um on their proposal to uh per considering the transition to a city department. Following the joint meeting that we had with the fire department, uh the city asked the fire department for detailed financial statements, amounts in cash reserves, copies of bylaws and twenty-eight E agreements, and then breakdowns of the call logs for the EMS versus non-EMS. Uh, the fire department later that month did produce the uh fire department income and expense detail. Um, the fire department constitution, their call breakdowns for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four, the response data for twenty twenty-five, their twenty twenty-three tax exempt filing, and then a twenty-eight E agreement between the by-state regional commission, state of Illinois, state of Iowa, including um a number of fire protection agencies on the Iowa and Illinois side. And they also included their incident reports for the years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five. With those documents being received, they are currently um with our city attorney being reviewed. Uh, we did receive just this afternoon, um just shortly before the meeting, some additional documents. Um, and so the city attorney is working on reviewing those as well, um which are related to the relationship with Scott County and the Benefited Fire District. Um, so we are hoping to get uh some verification on those documents and um the official records associated with those. So the current status would be that the city attorney is gathering that additional information and documentation, uh working to finalize a summary of those factors and what the implications would be for the city council to consider on that broader scale. Um, there is a goal to have a summary, including um some additional information and background from some of the other area municipalities who have had the hybrid workforces and who provide fire protection services under similar circumstances. And as we gather that um additional information from the Eldridge Fire Company as well as Scott County, um looking to obtain official records for the one, the records that we've obtained so far. So as soon as there's a summary finalized, um we'll get that out to the city council and we'll share that with the volunteer fire department members as well. Um, but just wanting to provide that update since the last uh conversation that we had spoke to ordinances and things and when those would be able to be drafted. So just wanting to provide the status update currently of where we are at with that information. Any questions that you might have right now?
I think we need to just be transparent with everybody, I mean, and just, I think we're sending some mixed signals to the public, I think. Um, if you go back to our, when we met with Keith and the department back, I make it, we're all ready to jump. We all saw the problem and saw the issue and, and they got us their stuff. And then on May nineteenth, our meeting, Jeff brought forward the whole issue about the possible county-wide fire department. The state legislature put us, you know, in kind of a pickle there, cause we aren't certain what's gonna happen there. And at that meeting where Brian was not in attendance, um there was this consensus here that we need to maybe brakes a little bit on that, that this county-wide fire department thing could be something that could bite us in the butt down the road if we did that. And then our last meeting, we went back and put our feedback on the gas a little bit with asking the city staff to get ordinances and ordnance ready to go and that kind of a thing. And I think we're sending, I think, I'm hearing from the public that it's a done deal, that we're gonna take over the fire department, because we kind of insinuated that. But I also heard at our May nineteenth meeting that this county-wide fire department is something we maybe need to be cautious of and we should pump the brakes. I just think there's a lot of due diligence that needs to be done yet. I think that we need to uh be transparent, not only with the public, but with the fire department, you know, that we do have some concerns, you know, and there's, there's gonna be questions down the road. Um, so I just think we need to be clear on that. I think that we're sending mixed signals in, in a way. Because at that May nineteen be, meeting, there's a pretty good consensus that, wait a minute, this county-wide fire department thing could be an issue with us. And even though it may not be a good thing, I know you guys are against it and I'm not, I have, you know, and I think most of our issues in the county are against it, but if the state says we need to do this, we need to think, what are the ramifications if we have a fire department? So I think that we just need to be clear of the message that we're sending.
Well, to add to that, I think I wanna know the, the clear pros and cons of what would happen if it does go county-wide. Were already established to the city-based fire department. What are gonna be the pros and cons and what are, what are more important for the city, what are the consequences? The last thing I wanna do is put the city in a position to where we're in a financial bind because of new legislation that passed right after we complete the process.
Right.
Um, my biggest concern in talking with Councilman Dockery is, is don't have a year. And, and so that's the other side of it too, is um time is, is hugely important right now. But again, I wanna know what potential consequences could be there. That's, that's my biggest concern, is that we make the wrong decision.
Right. And I don't, we, this is not a fix, but you know, in our budget, we allocated what, forty thousand dollars for the fire department to go towards a new chief, I believe, was our thing. And so I, and that would be available July first. And so that would let them go ahead and move forward and hire their chief and go down that road and, and that gives us the time to see what kind of plays out. It gives us the time to have Allison do the due diligence. There, there may be ramifications that we don't even know about. You know, they, they can, they wanna give us everything, which is great. But the county might have something to say about that, but the Benefited Fire District, we don't know that, you know, and we just need to make sure that we're doing the right thing for everybody. But that forty thousand dollars would go a long ways toward them being able to hire their full-time chief and, and work on all those lines.
That becomes available July, July one, right?
Correct. So there was an additional forty thousand set aside um for the fire department for the purpose of that full-time employee um in our fiscal year twenty-six budget that starts on July first. And I believe we have some set aside actually in our current fiscal year twenty-five budget too, if I remember correctly.
The frustrating part is, you know, you go to EMA meetings and you try to talk to the county supervisors and, you know, it's so hard because you have uh Webster that's doing his thing, you know, in, in Iowa. And then you're trying to understand what the timeline is. And you know, is it, is it June of twenty-six when the fire marshal has to have his due diligence done? And then you hear from other people that that's just the, that's just the maximum. It's already happening, they're already halfway done, it should be well before that. And you know, I, I see a bunch of fellow firefighters that are tired and want answers. I wanna give them answers. I wanna do the right thing for everybody. But we, we don't have the answers and we can't get the answers and that's what's so frustrating. You know, we do go, go at a snail's pace for a reason, so you know, nothing bites us in the butt later. But you know, I, I see the direct need that we have at this time, but yet, you know, if we pull the trigger at this time and, and we don't get the tech, you know, where the tax breaks, if every, every city, you know, everyone's taxed on it, not just Eldridge, but county-wide and everything. You know, how is that gonna work for us in a year? And how is that all gonna come together where we're all gonna win?
Right.
You know, we have an amazing fire department right now that has great equipment. I don't think anyone in Eldridge worries about a thing uh because they're, they're, they're proven. I mean, they're just a great group of guys that are very well trained and do a great job for the city of Eldridge. So I don't wanna let them down, but yet, with the other hat on, you worry because you can't get any straight answers at this time. It's too new. And you know, the fire department's like, hey, you know, we, we wanna do this by the end of the year. And I'm like, I, I don't know how to appease everybody. Because you know, if, if we do this wrong, I can see where this can cost the city over five million.
Right.
And if we do it right, you know, it's gonna, and it'll be every taxpayer that pays for it. And then it won't be as much of a stress just now in the city, but you know, for county-wide also, so um I don't have any great answers for you, because we can't get any answers. So we have to do our due diligence. We have to figure out, you know, what the right answer is and then move forward as soon as we get that information.
And you're exactly right, Dan. And this is not a knock on our department. And I mentioned before, between you, Brian and I, we probably have sixty or seventy years of experience on the department. And there's no question that our department is a shining star in the county. I mean, there is absolutely no question about it. But, and every time I drive by that station, I, I have great memories, a few bad ones, but great memories of my time on that department. But now we're kind of wearing a different hat, you know, we're wearing this. And so you wanna help as much as you can, but we also gotta protect ourselves down the road and do the right thing for the city. And that's kind of why I think pumping the brakes a little bit, at least sending that message is a good thing.
Right. And, and you know, I want them to all know that we're trying.
Right.
It's just we have to do the right thing for the right reason.
Right.
I disagree with him. Guys, we're in trouble right now. The city's in trouble right now with fire department. We don't have time to put this up. We've got people, fire department that are begging us for help. And we're saying, well, let's wait. Uh, what the governor did was to do a study on the four largest counties. That's a study. We don't know if there's gonna be any outcome of that. Uh, even if there is a outcome, we're gonna have to wait till the next general session to be binding. We need to help them now. Uh, I get a little frustrated, cause we talked about the county and the Benefited Fire District. Have we communicated with the county, ask them those questions? Are we dragging this out, taking time because of the other deal? We don't have that time. These gentlemen one day could just say, here's the keys.
And I.
Then what do we do?
I don't disagree with anything you said about the urgency of it, Brian. But us taking it over, how is that gonna solve the wildfire problem? Are we gonna have our city guys start refunding fire calls? Is that gonna be the thing? I mean, how, how does, cause that's their biggest thing right now. I mean, they're burned out and they want a chief.
They, they want a chief to manage paperwork, training. Um, if we took, here's how I envision it. If we took that over, hired a chief, put him over there and uh the current members, the volunteers, would probably form an Eldridge Fire Department Volunteer Association separate from the Eldridge Fire Department Corporation. Company, corporation. So the volunteers. So the volunteers would still be there working, we're just trying to take the load off of everything else.
But we're giving them the money for the chief. We're giving, we're letting them, we're giving them the funding to hire their chief, which would solve the problem.
Um, to get a good qualified chief, we're gonna have to have benefits.
Well, again, and maybe so, but again, we need to go back and look at the city's point of view. And I think we still, there's still due diligence that we need before we can go forward on this.
And that's what Allison's doing right now, right?
Right, exactly.
So wheels are in motion. I know, Brian, it's not as fast as we want to go, but.
But we started this a long time ago. We're really no further along the line than we're evaluating. In my opinion.
We started it in May, on May second.
They've been to us for a couple of years.
Or I've been here for a year and a half, so.
They've been to us for. You know, our, our responsibilities, council members, is water, sewer, police and fire. Fire department corporations cover that by charging the S A fee for fire protection. If they don't do that anymore, how are we gonna get fire protection? I'm not a big fan of countywide. Uh, they sit back and watch medics' responses and listen to them around the county. Is that what we want for citizens? I don't. You know, if the study comes out, do you think Vettendorf's gonna forgive their fire department, put it under countywide? I doubt it. Will Leclerc? I doubt it. Davenport won't. Davenport's always gonna have a fire department.
And I'm not a fan of the countywide either, because I don't know how it would work. But as we know, the state legislature has different ideas than we do sometimes, that they would force us down our throat.
It was just the study. That even depends on what the study comes out. Uh, doesn't mean anything will be voted on. The earliest they can vote on it is next session. My opinion is our department, we don't have a year. I think we need to start asking those other questions parallel with what we're asking. We need to check with county unbenefited. You know, could Eldridge charge the benefited fire district the same as the legislature rate? That's departments get now. All these twenty-eight year agreements.
Can you get conversations with your fire district board, with Scott and Sheldon, those guys? Have you had discussions with them?
They're, they're, yeah, they, we've talked to our counties.
But do they know, do they, do they have the authority to, to give, uh, to give the city all the, everything, livestock and burrow?
It's not theirs. It's ours. I mean, we're incorporated. They give us tax money, yes. But the equipment is the fire department, the incorporated fire department is ours in that, in that regard.
And Scott was here that one night and said he's all aware of this and. I think we need to ask those questions. We need to start asking more questions than just asking a question, wait for an answer, then go to the next.
I think you started to do that. You tried to get some information. You sent some questions to Keith, right?
Correct.
And some of that came back today.
Um, yeah, we, we did get some of it back following that meeting and then we did get some additional information today. Um, just maybe a couple, an hour or two before the meeting. So we do have some additional information that Allison is reviewing and she is working with. Um, the county and some other agencies on asking additional questions and getting that information that the, the council is seeking. And having some of those questions answered and reviewed, um, to bring back for further discussion.
Right.
We, we provided all the information probably in that meeting and then additional questions were asked last Thursday. I reached out to the county because we did not have anything documentation-wise at the fire station that we found and all the archive stuff relating to the fire district. Was the question Allison asked. So I reached out to the county, I obtained that from them and it was sent to Allison today. So three days, she got the information, what was brought today. It was not stuff from the previous meeting.
Right, I get that. But it took you guys almost two weeks to get us the initial batch and you're busy and that's okay. It's, it's fine with that. I'm not being antagonistic.
Describes the problem perfect, right? This, the fire department is third, fourth, fifth priority best case, right? Our family may not think of it as that way some days. But we all got full-time jobs and I work fifty to sixty hours a week in my job. When I take off for calls during the day, I make up those hours. I get my stuff up. We are not gonna be able to jump at a moment's notice and get stuff like that. It took us a while to get that all together. Yeah, it's, that's the problem. It, it, that's the problem. And again, you know, go back to the, the stuff we went over in the early May meeting. This is part that's a little frustrating for me right now. Is that early May meeting, we discussed that potential legislation from the state. It's a study. It wasn't signed by the governor at that point. It has been signed since then, but it's a study that is due next July. It, it may not come back, it may come back and do absolutely nothing. It may come back and blow up the entire county. We don't know. As Brian alluded, I don't think we've got the time to wait another year. There was comments made that, well, what's one person gonna do? There's a lot of things one person can do. They can set up schedules so that not everybody's gotta respond every time the pager goes off. They can take care of some of that stuff that we just don't have the time to do anymore. Before, one day, you know, like I said, that, that may, that early May meeting. You're gonna get the code to the front door, you're gonna hire twelve, you're not, if, we gotta get that one so we can stop the bleeding, get this thing going. Before it's too late and we can't respond.
I don't disagree. I just think there's.
I, again, I, and you say, maybe, want me to get on my knees and.
Do you appreciate, like I said, we appreciate all you guys are doing. This is not.
And I, I, I understand that. But again, I know you're a year and a half into this, but we've had formal discussions on this for more than four years now. It's critical that we get something going sooner than later. It's absolutely critical.
Well, council needs to understand, we're in trouble, either way. We hire somebody, take over the fire department. We could be in trouble. Depends on what the legislature does. If we don't do anything, we're in trouble because these guys can't take too much more. And I'd rather err on the side of having one extra employee if it takes over. The assets, that'll be defined if there ever is a bill, what happens to those. As far as if the county takes over. I mean, right now, Davenport's responding to Mount Joy calls for the department.
That's expected. There, there are automatic mutual aid.
Yeah.
When it's. Depending on the closest favorite department, it doesn't matter whether it's half or Vettendorf or Longrover dining. It just affected to matter where it's at in our territory.
I mean, all you guys know, that've been on the department, Ryan, you're on Davenport, when that pager goes up, you go to wherever that address is, they say. You know, all these twenty-eight year agreements, doesn't surprise me. Something that's a nuclear plant. Our guys could go anywhere. I mean, decommissioned thing is still at North Scott High School, I think.
Correct.
So, a big barn powder up down in you, they're going. Parkview, they're going. Long Grove, they're going. So I don't think we can afford to wait. We need to be pushing this.
I guess I don't see how we're not needing, I mean, I still see the wheels turning. So I, I don't think there was never a program. We're only doing one question at a time, one answer, then moving to the next step. I think we've got several things in the works right now. So.
Brian, I, I can't say yes or no because I haven't seen the dam thing. Um, everything's between Nevada, our city attorney, and maybe one or two of you guys, but the rest of us.
How far is that, list the questions?
So all of the documents when they came in, from May twenty-third. The only other new thing was today about an hour.
This is, this is like half of the stuff that happened in Nevada. And then we've gone through all this stuff, the ordinances, everything that Keith sent us. I mean, this is like half of it. I mean, so they've given, I think they've been transparent.
The only thing that hasn't been sent out is just what we received today, because Allison was just kind of reviewing through it initially and then.
If you have questions.
Allison's office had already reached out to the county even before she asked us, saying that.
But she was trying to get that progress, take multiple avenues to see the quickest way to get a response back on those documents.
She made the same phone call, Keith. Yeah, and that was not even on her, it was somebody in her cell.
Yeah, but she didn't get anything right in the interest.
Yeah.
I mean, it took a few days and they finally came back with, and I don't even think what we got back then. It's nothing, at, at least from what I understand of it, it doesn't say the Eldridge Fire Department and the fire district have an agreement. I don't think, I don't think it does. I. I don't think it, I, it, it was a very strange document. It didn't seem like it, it seemed like it was three or four things, like even like an application. It was blank. I guess it was, like I said, and that was all that they, they could find after digging.
Well, years ago, they used to charge individual farms a fee per year for fire protection.
Well, now, and now that's the county trust, now, but we put the ad in the paper for the taxation rate, yeah, that's gone too. It's gen, generic, if you wanna call it that sense.
But my point is, we don't have time to wait.
And I guess my point is, in four and a half years, I think more wheels are running now than they ever have. So I don't want them to think that we're not doing anything or we're stalling because we're not, but we're getting all the footwork done so we can get moving. I, I understand your point, Brian, and I'm, I don't wanna let anyone down, especially them, but yet, we have to do the right thing. And we have to give Allison a little bit of time to do this. So May, it's June, right? So it was a month ago. And it was four and a half years ago when we kinda started all this, when we talked about a part-time. And then a full-time administrator and then now a chief. I mean, so it's, it's kinda gotten worse and worse and worse. And, and I, I know they're on tilt right now, if you wanna call it that, but we have to do the right thing. And we do have more wheels going now than we never have in four and a half years.
Yeah, we're not saying no, we're just saying we need to pump the brakes. I mean, that's all that we just, that's what we're.
I guess, I don't quite understand pump the brakes. If we're moving forward, we're moving forward.
Not as fast as any of us want to go.
Well, I.
I, I think that's why it's pump the brakes. It really means that, you know, we can't say eight weeks we're gonna have any answers, because I, I really can't.
No, I, I, the eight weeks came and after, that was after the city attorney provides the roadmap.
Right.
And I guess at this point, did we have a date? Have we said, you know, can you have a roadmap by, did we give them a, a deadline?
Had it takes eight weeks, probably eight weeks to get an ordinance passed.
Right, right. And, and I, you can't get the ordinance until you get the roadmap from Allison. It's the way I understood, the way I understood it from that May fifth, meaning that she was going to bring back a roadmap to you to be able to write the order. And that's when the eight weeks would start. So my question, I guess, was, do we know, do we have an expectation when Allison will have that roadmap?
Not quite yet. But we're, we're, we're turning the wheels trying to get there for you.
She's trying to gather the information. With the documents that come up, it ends up creating another question of what needs to be answered. And so as soon as she's able to get that information and answer those questions to provide that roadmap and know. What agencies are involved, what relationships exist and how things were established and how that would work with transfers of assets and things. Um, those are the questions she's trying to answer that would build that roadmap. And so just having all of the documentation that she needs and, and she's working on, on doing that. I know she's actively trying to work with you guys and work with the county and, and reach out to whatever agencies might be able to help provide that information.
Well, working with other agencies is gonna be no different than what our police department currently does. If they get paged to back up somebody, no matter where it is. So a couple of years ago, we had them at North Park Mall when the riot or whatever was going there. Mutual agent will be no different than our police department currently doing. So that part, I mean, that might sound like a third of that page. There's no sense in trying to find twenty-eight agreements and all that. Bottom line is if they're paged, they go. Just like if we need help if we have a major thing here, they page other departments to come here.
I think that we're on the same page. I think we all still feel the same way we did back in May, on May fifth. My reasoning for starting this conversation was I felt that we're giving people mixed messages and maybe even you, including the public.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's why I have, that's why the discussion is tonight, that I wanted to recap where we are at and how we went from the. May fifth to the consensus of, of the countywide, to Brian's pushing the ordinances and that's what this discussion is here. I think everybody is still moving forward. I don't, I know you didn't mean this as a negative, Brian, but this is not just Nevada and Allison and Jeff pushing us through. They have given us all this information. I ask questions of them every single week. I call them and ask them questions. And they've answered every single question that I've had. When I get a re, question from a resident, I go to them. So all you gotta do is call and ask their questions. You can't just say they're pushing this through. I think, I think we're moving.
I'd like to ask a question of you, Scott, and you made the comment earlier about we need to pump the brakes and see what this, um, this, um, Senate bill plays out. Are you indicating pumping the brakes that you wanna wait to see what the Senate, the bill that went to the Senate for the study says before you make any action?
No, I'm thinking that's something that we can, we need to have more discussion on. I'm more interested in what Allison is gonna find and, and the stuff with the county and how this is all gonna work together. I'm not saying we're gonna wait till next June to do anything. No, not at all.
I just, the previous council. It came across, you and Councilman Yosi both made comments about we need to see what this bill says before we do anything.
Uh, we did have.
What the intention of it is.
Yeah.
So that's why I said I wanna reach out.
Right.
To lawmakers and others, uh, county officials, let's get those answers. I wanna know what it looks like. Because like we said, you guys don't have a year. We don't have a year to wait for that bill to come out. If that's the facts, then we need to know. We make decision A or decision B, what are the consequences of either one? What are the pros, what are the cons? But if we don't ask those questions, we have no idea that we're not making that right, physically responsible decision for the taxpayers of Eldridge. That's all I'm saying is I wanna have those facts.
We need all the information.
And I, I completely respect the fact to be, be physically responsible, but I also want you to remember to be, um. Physically responsible for providing the fire protection. And by kicking the can down the road, it may result in you having to find another avenue or another source to bring in to cover that responsibility. Yeah, like we've said, we've been talking about this for four and a half years. And it is the city's obligation and responsibility by the state to provide fire protection to the citizens of Eldridge. And right now you've got sixteen well-trained, well-respecting volunteers that are willing to do that. And Dave and I and Tim, sitting back at our meetings, talking to them. The messages that are coming out of these council meetings are making them very uneasy. And if we're gonna try to progress and make sure our citizens are taken care of by having the people here. We need to keep moving forward and not talk about waiting for bills or talk about delaying things or. If it's getting answers, that's fine. Like the Councilman Doctor says, we have to multitasking a couple of things at the same time. But the messages coming out, I don't know what messages Scott Campbell's referring to, if, if people are talking to him. I haven't had any people contact me and I'm the other, you know, representative of the other half of the entity, um, of concerns. But I know the people that we go to the calls for, they bring it up and say, we don't know what the holdup is. We need fire protection, just like we need water, we need electricity and we need sewer homes, as well as our police department, so.
Well, my purpose is to keep pushing this tonight. I think I've accomplished that.
I think we've been pushing. I don't think that, I think that Dan spoke eloquently about that. I don't think we're just doing our due diligence.
Well, we're doing our due diligence, but I hope everybody around this table understands the urgency of it.
I think we've all said that several times. I agree.
I agree. I understand it one hundred percent.
Yeah, and we've told them, great they are. We have told them they are shining star of the county. We have appreci, we appreciate them. I don't know how much more we can do that. We've offered them money to hire a chief. You know, we've, we've gone that route.
Point of clarification there. We are not hiring the chief. The city is gonna hire the chief. That doesn't take. Cause that was an avenue we've talked.
But if we, but, but, but just what would happen, Dave, if we find out we can financially take over the department? And then would you, wouldn't you guys hire a chief then or not?
No.
Okay.
We don't, we would probably close the doors. Cause again, that was, that was actually one of the discussions in, in this last four and a half years. Why don't we just give you the money and you hire the chief, but it doesn't take the burden away from us? Now volunteers are managing a paid chief, or you got somebody at the head of a department that has no brains. You know, nobody watching over them, managing them, other than maybe a group of volunteers. It doesn't work. And a- again, it doesn't solve the problem of taking the burden away from the volunteers.
Doesn't, what responsibility does the district, the fire district itself and the, the people that are appointed to. Be the head of that district, what's their responsibility?
You mean like the county trustees?
Yeah.
Um, so the county trustees, there's three, I, I think it's all, is it all the districts? Get three?
Yeah.
Um, three trustees and they set the tax rate for the county side of the, the tax. Uh, I, I don't know if there's any responsibility beyond that. I believe our district has been at the maximum allowed levy. I don't know if that's a county or a state, but it's probably the county level. I think they've been at that maximum level the entire thirty years I've been on the department. It's, it's a, it's a rate that we can't change. We have, uh, we have a meeting, the public meeting that gets posted in the paper. There's rules. I don't remember the whole rules of when it has to be published in the paper. We have an open meeting at the station. I think that one, one year out of the thirty years I've been on where anybody else, anybody showed up. Um, and then trustees take a vote and then that tax rate comes through.
And they have the right to review your budget.
Yep. Yeah.
So that's what the trustees do. They're appointed by the board of supervisors.
Yeah, and I guess my point, what I'm asking the question was, would they have any responsibility managing a paid employee?
No, because all they do is provide us the tax money that is sent to us. Their only responsibility is to determine how much tax money is sent to the corporation, to the fire.
They're not employees, you know, they're basically volunteers as well. It'll be like, it'll be like one of us managing, you are, you know, but, so we can't manage.
Their job is oversight of the tax that's from the county district.
And they have no input of what we spend that money on.
We keep proceeding forward. What we're working on, have you guys, has anybody looked at the job description and put feedback on that? Got any different feedback on that, Nevada?
I have not.
Yeah, I've got no, I've got no feedback on anything I've sent out.
So that's another thing we could be working on.
I looked at five different versions. They're all confusing. And I, yeah, and most recently, I sent out the most recent version and asked, is this good to go or due soon? I mean, changes.
I just haven't had time to put down, but I, there's definitely changes that I would put in.
So I, yeah, I welcome those, and then we can, at least have the job description ready to go. I might check with the latest cities, see what they advertised before too. Anyway, I've talked to five different departments. I got job descriptions from probably ten, ten departments. Created an initial job description, went through five versions. You've got the latest version, I asked for feedback. I got feedback from no one. So that's where I'm at on the job description.
Anything else? All right, that will conclude the discussion. Nothing. We'll wait to see what Alice comes, and then the rest of you can ask any additional questions you had to Nevada. And if you all would please go over that and any, any changes, want to get with Jeff on that, that'd be appreciated. Discussion and funding for Fellner's addition, South Twenty-Fifth and Twenty-Sixth Avenue Street Improvement Project, and the next step, Nevada.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this was a project that came forward in a committee of the whole, and the council asked, um, to have some funding options brought back to be able to fund, um, doing all three phases of the Fellner's addition, um, with the concrete, uh, rather than asphalt. So with the updated cost, um, the total of all three phases, when you include a twenty percent percent contingency, is about two point three million. Um, so looking at the funds that we have right now, it would be a locally funded project. It wouldn't qualify for state or federal funding, um, based on the classification of it as a residential street. So we currently have in our road use tax funds in reserves in fiscal year twenty-six approximately one point seven million. Um, and the annual revenue that comes into that fund is approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand. In our sales tax for fiscal year twenty-six, we currently have reserves of about five point two million. The annual revenue coming into that fund is approximately one point three million. Um, and then we do have some obligations in that fund, so what would be available in, um, approximately what would be available in a fiscal year in the sales tax to be used on projects is around seven hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, there's currently two hundred thousand sitting in the street projects, uh, capital fund. And this particular project would not be in a TIP district, so it would not be something we can qualify to pay, um, using TIP funding in our current TIP district, and, uh, I don't believe it's included in the area that we are considering looking at for a future TIP district. So for options, um, if it was something that the council was looking at doing, um, in this current year, there is a recommendation from Zach based on the schedule that even if funding was approved and working to move this project forward tonight, um, putting together the proposal for the design and then getting that design together to go out to bid would be, um, at least fall, because the design after approving the proposal would take about six to eight weeks. Um, going out to bid would give that construction, uh, we'd be asking or looking for, uh, the spring of fiscal year. The spring of twenty twenty-six would still be in fiscal year twenty-six, so it would likely be able to start in late fiscal year twenty-six and carry over to fiscal year twenty-seven. So we could use, um, some reserves and, and bring forward a resolution to commit some reserves from the road use tax fund or the sales tax, or a combination of the two, to get the project started in the current year, and then commit monies from either one of those funds, um, for the fiscal year twenty-seven to complete that project. Um, or we could commit funds in fiscal year twenty-seven and phase it out into two or three phases, uh, as it was originally proposed, and, and, uh, bunch that into those funds over the next two to three fiscal years. Um, so those would be the options that we currently would have. We don't have funding available in the current fiscal year that would, um, cover that cost or any significant portion of it that's not already allocated.
Nevada, I like your idea of doing it in phases. Uh, would you do it in three phases? Uh, we're, have a better opportunity to do the cash flow without running our reserves too low. Because we all know there's going to be other projects that come in and come up in this timeframe. That's be my preference to do it in phases, so we have a better chance of cash flowing it.
Tony, what, if we did it in phases, which one do you think would be the best?
Uh, South Twenty-Fifth is the worst. Um, I think when we presented our capital improvement plan, we had it in phases as well. Um, so South Twenty-Fifth would be the first year, South Twenty-Sixth the second year, and then a lot more. Potentially the third or fourth year, depending on how other streets fare in our capital improvement plan.
Do your consensus here to have Nevada put the numbers together to show what it would likely do in three phases then?
Yes, please.
Yes, um, Nevada, are you also asking to get Shike started on the designing of it also?
No, I think he'd have to have a, an idea of how the council wanted to proceed, of what's going to be in phases. Um, then he would bring forward a proposal for what the design for that phase would be, or would he make a proposal to design all three phases and then just move forward with the construction of the first phase? Um, to the direction from council, what he needed to get that proposal started.
So is that a consensus for her to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure it goes back to, I don't mean to pick on the fire department guys. But, uh, I believe the meeting, I was absent when I was on vacation, we hired city staff, part-time, summer intern. I think that was accurate from the minutes. Um, would it be possible to have that individual, um, contact all the Eldridge businesses? And get an updated contact list, names and numbers? Uh, we could use that for the police department, and we could also give it to the fire department. So they're not sitting out on the scene for four hours, Dave? Trying to find somebody to, uh, unlock up a building after the alarm went off. I think we need to, uh, build that database back up. Make it as current as possible, give the information of the police department, well, city hall too, in case somebody comes up there for contact and the fire department.
Agreed.
Let's do the list.
Thank you, Brian. Move on to number eight, new business presentation from Ryan Windmiller regarding potential land donation pertaining to potential pond to use as a recreation community amenity.
I think that's short. Um, so I was, I've heard various rumors that the city has been, or the public has been looking for another fishing pond or area in the city of Eldridge as an amenity. So, um, I wanted to propose an idea of donating our pond that we have currently finished, established, ready to go. It's, two, it'd be just shy of three acre piece of property. The pond itself is one point three acres. It's plenty deep, at twelve feet. It's two hundred and forty-five wide at the top end, and it's four hundred and seventy foot long. So it's got a lot of good size to it. It is very, very close to Sheridan Meadows, and I think we're easily, um, could work with a walking path or some sort of path. Eventually, well, there's a couple of different ways to accomplish that, either now or eventually to walk from that path to there. Uh, it's currently accessed, or currently could be accessed off of, uh, which is the street and, or, uh.
Number six, Avenue.
Yeah, six, Avenue. Could, currently could be accessed from that without any extra. Um, this would allow, the city already has something that's already built, already ready to go. All that needs to be done is stocked by the state for, for the fish out, for the fish. The, uh, only cost the city, if they wanted to redo the side, right now, we've got alfalfa in there that's been, that we can, that we mow. That can be redone. That'd be about the only cost that there would be left. It's got riprap all the way around, so it's, it's, it's established and done very nicely, and, uh, for erosion and everything else. So just wanted to open the conversation up, wanted to see if the city had any interest in that, and then talk through more of the details or questions that they have. Thought it might just be a win-win for, for you guys that have, have a, have something that's immediately ready.
If there's two ponds there, this would just be one of them.
This would be one. I'm sure that you could have a discussion with the person that owns the second one, but I have not had any discussion with that, and there's potential that you could do both. But I was, I was just starting with the one.
So here's my, here's my first, uh, response to it, is what are we opening up? With the past conversations that we just got done having with the detention ponds, and what the state levels are doing, and those homeowners associations that are, have been trying to give them to us, what, what kind of a can of worms is going to be the opening?
Or are those ponds or those detention bases?
Detention bases, but still detention areas.
There's, yeah, there's some difference between the two. This one at least has an amenity to it, where a lot of them are just green space.
The ponds were built as a requirement for development. Meter, then two.
MS four.
MS four. I'm not a big fan of assuming ponds or detention areas. Uh, those are there to benefit the property owners so they could develop background.
In this case, I would probably agree with you, Brian.
That always got. I think it is opening up a can of worms.
I do too, and I also think we've got a pond already at Sheridan Meadows that we're putting a committee together to investigate that, and we got to get that solved first. That's got to be your top priority out there.
Well, the other part is, if there's a pond there in the city, well, there's no parking other than along Sixth Avenue or the streets there. Um, I think if, at this time, I think it adds a lot of burden. Dan, the fisherman, he said they're going to pay you.
No, well, and, and, you know, we, we had the same discussion, like, three, four, or five years ago with Grenwell, when Grenwell was trying to give us his down there. And you had a lot of really good valid points about mowing it and keeping it open, why not? We've kind of stuck with that. So like Brian said, what would we open it up to then? And then we have those other detention ponds all throughout town, where, you know, the, um, home builder, you know, more or less let it default on purpose, and now it's everyone else's problem that he has.
I mean, the lots right across the street from them are probably the best lots. Wouldn't they be more valuable for?
Not public use. It was private, yeah.
Well, it is private, it is.
Right.
exists.
But it wouldn't, it would change the other way. That's, went to a public use, it would be less, because we've got all public. And eventually you'd have to park, and you'd have the street there that could have totally one-sided. You'd have that, excuse me, have that. And you would have the extra cost, and when you go to redo Sheridan Pond, that's going to be a big expense, and take a long time.
Now, I will admit, I've seen young lads out there on their bicycles with fishing poles.
On that pond?
Yeah, on your pond.
I'm going to have very good luck.
Block your third track.
But it keeps them busy.
Yeah.
Right, good.
Yep.
Mr. Windmiller, you've got a, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I remembered on your plaque that there's going to be like a sidewalk, like through the connects Sharon and Meadows Park to basically, uh, whatever that, the top of the street is. Over there, I guess, they're not sure the top.
No, it's going to go from third, I believe.
East Harrow Street.
I don't even remember.
Yeah, we, we had something changes, I think there.
Oh, is that these price street?
I think it's, I think we, I think the top would change the price, I think, when to go through a connect, but.
But yeah, so there is a.
There, my point is, there would be a kind of connection through a sidewalk to a public.
Yeah, and first one, it shows kind of what our plan is with that.
So there'd be some.
So this plane vector consensus that, um, right now, we'd like to pass on this.
Yep. I think at this point, yeah.
All right. Thanks for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Eight B, consideration of resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seventeen, setting wages for the city employees for the fiscal year twenty-six, Nevada.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is just the annual resolution, but, uh, standard resolution that's required to, to publish public salaries and compensation. Um, it was, uh, drafted with the three and a half percent that was agreed to in the union contracts for the year. Um, what, the, any differences, uh, from the three and a half percent would be based on contract obligations. I know there were three officers impacted by lateral hires, um, as part of their contract negotiations. And then there are, uh, some departments that have that certification increase. I think we had one recently pass a certification exam, so his effect is going to show different than what uh, would be three and a half percent from his previous year's wage. So those would be the only deviations that we would see from that three and a half percent.
Nevada, the only question I have on all these, I mean, they all look fine, um, but I question Tony's wage, not because I'm questioning Tony's wage. I'm questioning why your wage isn't the same as Tony's.
Um, this wage was what was passed with council for the public works structure with the transition to public works director. There was a two-step wage increase that was approved, and I believe that second step that went to the one twenty was, took effect on, if I remember correctly, June first?
January, I think.
May first, May first.
Yeah, but I, I don't want Tony to grin too much, but I don't want him to be the only highest paid employee.
I would agree with you, Brian. I think that we need.
I think in all fairness, city administrator should be at the same wage, you know, if that influences Jeff's a little bit, because he's paid down the ratio of yours, I believe. So.
I would agree with that.
Um, that would be my motion, um, of maybe Ms. Friends present.
Are you saying to pair equal to Tony?
Correct. It's nineteen hundred dollars.
But I'm just thinking it, she's the administrator, should she be a little more?
I'm trying to help, Scott.
I know, I know, I get that. Well, just think, you just save $4,000 on that corporate project, right now?
For now.
I don't know if you could calculate out Jeff's real quick, are you?
I don't know what the
It would just be the percentage that would be based of
Jeff said 85%?
75 or 85%. I have to look back and sit and list it in the 80 minutes.
No, essentially, I think you're worth it, but I would recommend that we take Nevada to 125.
You want to bust my percentage down a little bit, it's gonna be okay.
No, we have those percentages for a reason. I think, I think we need to maintain that percentage. Not that I always agree with you, but fair is fair.
So do you guys have a motion? Second?
No, we don't.
You don't need to on this.
I, I made a motion to amend it, put her in the same as Tony's and it's had none, I needed to. And adjust Jeff's accordingly.
I mean, I, would you be okay with 125 for Nevada?
Like, I could live with it.
If you make that motion, then I would second that one.
No, I'm gonna keep my motion as making them under the same as Tony.
I won't second that.
All right, so then Brian's motion dies, so Scott, are you making a motion of 125?
I'll make a motion of 125 and adjust Jeff's accordingly.
Okay. And the rest, the rest of the wages can stand as the other?
Yep, yep.
Do I hear a second? Second? Posted by Campbell, second by Yosi to adjust wages for the city administrator to 125 and Jeff's appropriately. Roll call.
Yosi?
Aye.
Zachary?
Aye.
Colin?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
I'm seeing there is your honor.
Thank you, Tom. That's the number 8C, consideration approved resolution 25-16, reapproving Stone Brook Third Edition Outlet Replant, Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. This was an instance where the filing intern wasn't aware of our four-year, or I'm sorry, four-month limit on recording plats. So they went to record the plats a couple of weeks ago, they were denied. So we're just fishing it through one more time and getting an updated resolution. And they say that they will be recorded this week.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hello?
Second.
Posted by Yosi, second by Campbell, approved resolution 25-16, reapproving Stone Brook Third Edition Outlet Replant. Roll call.
Colin?
Aye.
Yosi?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Zachary?
Aye.
I'm seeing there is
Thank you. On to number nine, ordinance staff activity reports, Nevada.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates. The city hall intern update, we did have two applications. It was only posted for a short time, so I'd say two applications is a success and they were both very good. We had one that was in public administration and political science further major and from Eldridge. So we have him come tomorrow to meet with Jeff and I and go over kind of the plan schedule, what hours will work, some of the projects that we have. The other was also a great applicant, very enthusiastic. I believe goes to Granville University from the Quasity region, was a business administration major. So both fine applicants, we're looking forward to getting started with the one coming in tomorrow and being able to report back to you the stuff we were able to accomplish there. I will be out of the office on Thursday and Friday of this week with limited access to emails. So I'll make sure to put an out of office reminder on, but just wanted to make you all aware of that. Jeff will be here and I will be back on Monday. An update, there has been a steering committee formed for the Sheridan Meadows project for the Pond Basin area. That would be Scott Campbell as the park board liaison, Jeff Ashcraft and Scott LaPlante from the park board, Eric Grunhagen as to be on there to, as a resident representative. And then we would like to have someone from public works, assuming it would be Tony, to go to those meetings as well as Zach Howell, our city engineer, has offered to go to the meetings as well. And then Jeff or I will be, try to be at those meetings to be able to, one of us will be able to be at those meetings when they're scheduled to be able to do follow-up and get any action and get any questions answered for them. So Shad will be bringing forward the proposals that they have or the project options and costs that they've been able to come across so far for that area. And we'll also be coordinating discussion with the representative from the Corps of Engineer and the DNR to be able to meet with that steering committee and review those project options and costs that Shad was able to identify and to determine what steps would need to be taken with each of those project options so that the steering committee can put a recommendation together and present a summary to both the park board and the city council. Finally, public works would like to consider discontinuing, allowing the drop-off of appliances and car batteries and motor oil and would like to determine if there needs to be further discussion or action by council on that. The reasoning being that when the DNR has come to do their last two inspections for the MS4 permit, they've noted that those items are not being stored properly. And so those items can also be taken directly to the Scott County Recycling Center free of charge for Eldridge residents, which is only about seven miles away. So just wondering if there's any direction from council on whether there's input that they want to have on that or if they're okay with that consideration based on the impact it has on our MS4 permit inspections.
Fix all this stuff up now.
It's, there's local people that trade it for scrap, but will come and get it.
So it doesn't cost us anything, we're just storing it improperly?
Yeah, but, yeah, so on the past two, the most recent MS4 report where the DNR comes out and scores us, which was just a couple of months ago, and then one from five years ago, both noted that the, they're, all of the appliances that are dropped off aren't stored in a building or under a shelter because there isn't any room at the, at public works facility to do that. You know, all their areas are being used. So we were dinged for that. And then if citizens come to turn in oil and stuff, they're not as careful as one of our employees and if something's spilled, it makes a mark on the ground. And then that in both of those reports, we, you know, that dinged for that also, and then that's a hazard. And, you know, we have to take steps to, you know, clean that up. And there's basically nobody there to flee some, I mean, the gate's wide open. So, you know, if, if a public works employee is there, they're able to step over and help. But, you know, if they're not there, people just help themselves and do whatever they want to do, drop off. You know, like dish, dishwashers, for instance, nobody will take those for scrap because there's too much plastic in them. So then we're stuck with a dishwasher or a microwave that we've got to dispose of because the scappers don't want those because they're not worth anything. They can't trade those in places to take metal. So then the city's stuck with trying to dispose of appliance, you know, somewhere. Or, or we're paying staff to take that then to the Scott County Sewer Center and paying them money because we're a city to take that from us. So we're paying employee time and then paying the Scott County Sewer Center to take an item for something that somebody's illegally dumping in the city shop.
Will Larch pick up, do you get one a month?
The appliances, they won't take, as I, I'm pretty sure that's correct, they won't take appliances, correct?
I mean, if we don't have a, some sort of a means for it, they're going to start ending up in ditches out here. Now, the oil, I can understand, oil is something for oil and paint. If we had one day a month, then we would take oil so we can have somebody there for a few hours. But, but large appliances, you know, not everybody's got a pickup. It could be a challenge, we'll see them in the closest ditch outside of town.
How do they get them to public works? Or drop them in there?
Well, I took, I called my friend with a truck.
We could bring it forward as a discussion item too and get some direction and definition on it, just something to consider. And other than, just want to express appreciation for the amendment to the wage resolution. I certainly was not expecting that and I'm very appreciative of that, thank you.
Okay, Nevada, I got a question and hopefully I didn't miss it. When's Brian's last day?
His official last day is the 20th.
So you're gonna have anything for his official last day or?
Nothing official, I think, for his
How about unofficial, Tony?
Brian has not lost anything, we're gonna have lunch together as staff, so kind of for that, he requested hopeful and he requested nothing special.
Okay.
We're all in that form.
Jeff, do you have any other update?
I don't have any more updates there, thank you.
Jeff, Larry, do you have an update?
I do not.
Tony, do you have any update from the police department?
No major updates. We did just have our annual car show here in the parking lot Saturday. It was a record turnout for us so far, I think they had over 150 cars registered for, for the event. And it was just a good event for the police department and the veterans car club and we look forward to the event again next year.
Thank you, Tony.
Let me make a motion for adjournment.
Thank you, Brian, we have a second?
Second.
Posted by Zachary, second by Collins and Justin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.